Welcome to the July 1 Winterup Town Council meeting. It is about 6:30. We're in the Harvey Hearing Room. This meeting is on Zoom, meeting ID is 838-0891-1961. Passcode 173918. Phone number 646-558-8656. Roll call, please.
Councilor Ayala.
Yeah.
Councilor Costigan.
Here.
Councilor DeMarco.
Here.
Councilor DeRoz. Councilor Swob.
Present.
Councilor Tassinari.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Latieri.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, equal and just.
I ask you all to be made standing for a couple moments.
Folks, quiet.
A couple moments of silence. We're remembering tonight the loss of David Green and Ramona Cooper four years ago. A terrible tragedy, violent act driven by hate. We think about them often, and I wanted to remember them tonight. Also, Winterup lost a great citizen, Mr. John Domenico, passed early this morning. John was incredible man, I believe 97 years of age. Was a Winterup athlete, was a coach, a teacher, a principal, a U.S. Navy veteran. John was just a kind and gentle soul. God bless him. May he rest in peace. Please take a moment. First item I'd like to discuss tonight is congratulations. Last evening at a school committee meeting, we did a similar act, and it's so well deserved. I thought it would be a good time to do it again. We have Shannon Rannieri here with us. She just recently graduated Winterup High School, class of 2025, and she was recognized for receiving the Gracie Award from the Alliance for Women in Media Foundation. They took her family down to New York City for the award ceremony. She met some incredible people, which hopefully she'll share with us. This award is for outstanding journalism, and this award is basically a college award. Shannon is the only high school person in the country that receives this award. I want to congratulate Shannon on behalf of the council, wish her well. She will be attending University of Maryland in the fall studying journalism. Shannon, would you like to say if you were to?
I recognize actually most of you from the school committee meetings that I would go to and just from seeing you guys around town, obviously, but there's a small community, so it's kind of hard to not see everyone's faces every once in a while. Just want to thank you, especially you, Mr. Latieri, for letting me handle all the questions and letting me hopefully have some say in the community when the override was passed in April. I know myself included in the school committee, really kind of amped up our outreach to the community to try and get that passed. I know in November, we didn't really have a lot of time, but we used that time until November to April to try and get that going. So we'd not be here without the Winterup community, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you. You are wise beyond your years. There've been minutes passed on from the June 17 meeting circulated. Is there any motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor DeRoz, second by Councilor Swob. Any discussion on the minutes? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Now, general information recommendations, maybe not as glorious as Shannon, but we thank immensely we have received as a council and just in general, many people in the town obviously have been talking about the conditions, the cycles that are going on with our beaches, Yoro Beach and Winterup Beach. Winterup Beach is under the direction of the DCR and has been for many, many, many years. I've reached out, town manager reached out, Representative Turco's reached out. We are incredibly happy, and it's not an easy thing to do to come here and talk to us, but, you know, we definitely have concerns and questions that we want to answer, that we might just not know the actual answer to, and we're learning as others are. You know, it's been very tough over the last few weeks, especially with the seaweed issue. I know it might be a cyclical or whatever it is, and we, you know, we feel as a community, I'll say me, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but, you know, sometimes we feel our beach doesn't get the attention it might deserve and that other beaches do receive more attention. But again, I know Liz Kernian is here with us and Eric Seaborn.
Yes.
I thank you. These are our guests. I will ask for questions within the council. This is not a public comment period, but if you'd like to say a little something about Winterup Beach first, that would be great, and then I'll open it up and go around the table.
Sure. Yeah, so I'll start. Thank you very much for inviting us. It's a great opportunity. Thank you for everybody showing up tonight. It's great to see such a great turnout to a community meeting like this. So I'm Eric Seaborn. I'm the Director of the Office of Natural Resources for DCR's State Parks and Forest Division, and under our purview is Natural Resources Guidance for the Management of Our Beaches. So in general, what you should know about the way that DCR manages our beaches is it is our intent to manage the beaches as natural environments, a dynamic system, wetland resource areas, the dunes, the beaches, intertidal zone, everything is under the purview of the Wetlands Protection Act. And so our philosophy is to manage the beach as a natural system and recognizing that the rack, the seaweed that comes in off the ocean is a part of that natural cycle, as you know. And it also has incredible ecological benefits, also beach maintenance benefits. It helps trap sand, secure the sand on the beach, so it's a stabilizing force on the beach. So we try, in terms of managing the rack, the seaweed on the beach, we try to remove as little as possible from the system. We do remove, so the beach raking that you might see on the beach is, the intent of that is really to clean the beach mostly to human debris and trash. You know, we're going to pick up some of the rack. Any sweeping that we do on the beach, any raking, is an alteration of the beach just by the nature of that action. So we try to do it, you know, as minimally invasively as possible. It is, if you look in the Operations and Maintenance Plan that we filed with the Conservation Commission here in Winterup, it's interesting to note that Winterup Beach is technically considered under the Wetlands Protection Act a rocky intertidal coast, and I'm sure you've all experienced that, that there's a lot of cobble on that beach, a lot of, you know, rocks of all kinds. That, so, you know, there's the regulatory aspect of trying to manage the beach. There's also the operational difficulties of just plainly stating it, like the rakers that we use cannot discern between trash, small debris, and cobble. And so we, if, in areas where we, you know, rake on other beaches, we find that we're picking up a lot of cobble, and that is an alteration of the wetland resource area that we are not permitted to do. And again, so it becomes a difficult area in a lot of ways to rake extensively. You've probably seen the raking that occurs on Winterup Beach, occurs in the middle section, the middle beach.
South of the flagpole.
South of the flagpole, at the end of Cutler Street. And that's really the extent of where we, you know, feel that it's appropriate for this particular situation to groom the beach. So the rack that's out there now is, it looks like we just come out of the king tide cycle, and so the higher rack line you're seeing on the beach is, was probably deposited, could have been from winter storms, but it could also have been from that king tide cycle and was pushed up higher on the beach. The mean high water line, we were just down at the beach checking it out, is, you know, where the high water line is, and under the regulations, that mean high water line is, and then into the ocean is the intertidal zone, so the mean low water line. I try not to get too technical, but, so we cannot go into the, you know, to the low mean high water, including the mean high water line. So we really can't rake that area because it becomes a violation of the Wetlands Protection Act. It's also, the rack that's on the beach is, as I mentioned, extremely valuable ecologically. As you know, we have rare species of shorebirds on the beach, which is a wonderful thing. And those birds feed on the invertebrates that are in the rack line. It's a crucial source of food for those species. So, you know, it's a balancing act to trying to maintain recreational opportunities and protect the natural resources of this particular beach. For example, we, you know, if anybody's been down to Horse Neck Beach in the South Shore, when I was a kid and you go down there, it was the sandy area of the beach extended much further into the ocean through natural processes of, you know, beach erosion. Horse Neck Beach is becoming very similar to Winterup, it's becoming very much a cobble beach, and it's a natural process that, you know, at this time, we are, as an agency, we are not in generally the business of, you know, rebuilding our beaches to any great extent. So we're all trying to manage within these natural processes that are happening as best we can, so.
Thank you. If you want to say anything.
No, I probably skipped my introduction. I'm Liz Kern, and I'm a conservation biologist with the DCR as well, so.
Thank you so much. I'll ask the councilors if we have any questions. Councilor Ayala.
First, let me thank you for coming and also appreciate the work that you all do and understand the scientific and environmental constraints that you have on you, but also on the lack of resources that DCR typically gets year after year. So deeply appreciated for the work that you do do. I have a very narrow question, which is that the cobble, I think you described, which is the dried seaweed up high, is there any concern, given the extraordinarily high temperatures we have been receiving here, that they have a mutative effect on that and could create some harmful outcomes as a result of it? Or is that just not something to be concerned with? You know, we've hit 100 degrees, 95 degrees continuously and early in the cycle, and just wondering if that should be a concern of ours or not.
Well, I don't, I have not seen any literature about that being a potential problem. I think Liz might have some additional comments about the tide cycles, but as, you know, the rack that's dry up further on the beach from the mean high water run now, as I said, it's probably been sitting there for a while, but at some point, there will be another tidal cycle that comes and grabs it and pulls it back.
Yep.
So I don't think, as I said, I have not heard anything about, you know, it becoming pathogenic or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
I also haven't heard of that either, but at least, you know, everything I've always known about rack on the beaches, it's a fairly innocuous substance unless something DCR pays a lot of attention to is if rack becomes contaminated or if it's full of trash or it is deemed a public health concern, and we haven't had that concern really on our beaches. Dry rack just sort of dries out, it becomes a, you know, an area for invertebrates to sort of hang out, but it becomes just sort of an innocuous substance on the beach.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor President, if I could?
Yes.
On that topic, Meredith Hurley has asked to come in.
We do have our Director of Public Health, Meredith Hurley.
She reached out to DPH and might have some more information.
I know Jeannie Majio is here, the Chairperson of our Health Department. So if Meredith has anything to add to that.
No, the only thing that I would add is similar to what the DCR folks are saying is just that the research, you know, what we worry about in public health is more if they're vectors essentially for disease. So like, you know, we're used to vectors being like a mosquito for like West Nile virus. What we see in the literature is that the species that we're seeing with the kind of vegetation from the seaweed are not vectors for human disease. So that's what we worry about on my end, so that's reiterating kind of what the folks at DCR are also seeking. But also important to, you know, do the surveillance to see if there are any shifts in that, but for all intents and purposes, they are low to no risk other than potentially, you know, there are, if there's, you know, like sand flies, like what we would consider what we, you know, we sand flies. Some folks are especially like locally allergic to the itching, but that's, you know, a Benadryl or, you know, something topical.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yeah, thank you both for being here. Really appreciate it. My question is mostly about the birds. So, you know, I know you said natural, but, you know, they're not indigenous to Winterup originally. My question is, who sets the perimeters of where we're going to reserve for the birds? Like, for example, if they're laying in a smaller area, do we scale back on the area that the birds are in, or do we expand if they go outside of it? Like, who determines how big that area is?
So the size of the area is determined by our regulator. So it's determined by mass wildlife based on the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act, so based on those guidelines. So DCR follows best practices in terms of delineating viable nesting habitat for piping puggers and lease turns. We are required to delineate that nesting habitat by April 1st every year, and we do it according to essentially areas where you could imagine piping puggers nesting, where there are the right sort of parameters for them, and areas where they've historically nested. So anywhere on Winterup Beach or any of our DCR beaches where piping puggers or lease turns have nested previously has to be fenced on April 1st. We have some ability later in the season, once we've had some nesting attempts, maybe we've had pairs of birds that have arrived on site, they've nested, maybe they've managed to fledge their chicks, or they've nested so much they've exhausted their resources. We end up later in the season with the opportunity to scale back some of that fencing, and we take that very seriously because we know that we, DCR, really has this double mission. One, the reason we're out there protecting the birds is to keep the beach open for recreation, and so we very carefully, we have a team of monitors that are out there very carefully tracking the status of the birds, and as soon as we are able to, we backtrack the fence as much as we can to release the beach back to basically a total public access at that point.
Okay.
But DCR doesn't determine the distances. Those are, that's prescribed to us. We have to give every piping pugger nest on site at least 50 yards of buffer space in a fence.
Okay.
So that's what we do, make sure that the piping puggers are not being disturbed by any nearby recreation or anything like that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Councilor Costigan?
Yeah, thank you for being here as well. And as far as cobble beach, a natural process, the other beach you referenced, was that Horse?
Horse Neck Beach.
Beach it is.
Yeah, in Westport.
So that's always been also a question by a lot of people as well, is that a natural process? You know, or are there other issues? One, Deer Island, the tidal flow being somewhat channeled to that beach as well. And is your opinion of Deer Island wall, does that affect that beach at all?
I'm not familiar with Deer Island, so I couldn't offer an opinion. But, you know, many of our beaches in Massachusetts are, you know, they're subject to beach scour, to current scour, that's moving sand around constantly. So, you know, it is, the beaches are a dynamic system, they're always changing. It's, you know, that's just where we live in New England.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vice President Belcher?
Thank you, and as my colleague said, thank you for coming here tonight. Just a question about the Wetland Protection Act. When you mentioned that you can't do anything in between the mean water line and the low water line, is that specifically because Winterup's a rocky intertidal coast, or is that across the board?
Yeah, that's, that's a general, it applies to coastal beaches and the subset which are coastal intertidal.
Okay.
Beaches, basically. But it's general regulations about staying out of the intertidal zone. And if you think about it practically, to go rake when it's low tide, really wouldn't make much sense because as soon as the tide comes in, it's just.
And how often are those lines reassessed during the season?
They are set by, well, I mean, it's a DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, determination of where the mean water line is. You know, you might say, a general rule of thumb is to look where the day-to-day rack line is, that's probably the mean high water line or close to it. But the official designation is done on, is really, under the Wetlands Protection Act, is really done on a case-by-case basis. So say the town wanted to build something on one of your beaches, you would have to have a surveyor go out and do, indicate all of the buffer zones and resource area lines on a case-by-case basis. So to say where it is all the time is probably not realistic.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Tassinari?
Thank you both for attending tonight. We really appreciate your time and everything that you're doing to help clean up all of Massachusetts beaches and take care of our habitats and ecosystems. My only question, I guess, about the rack, the seaweed, is if it were to be removed because of a public health concern, which at the time, since we've heard from Ms. Hurley, it's not really a concern right now, would that be detrimental to the habitat, or is that just something we would need to do regardless of, once it becomes a public health concern, how much, how many more steps are there before we go and have it removed, is my question?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry.
All right, so we follow the guidance relative to rack management, as was mentioned, under multiple permits and guidance, and one of them is Coastal Zone Management Office has put out guidance about if there's a declaration of a public health issue with the amount of seaweed, then they still strongly urge, and because we're a fellow state agency, we try the best possible to follow the guidance to remove no more than a third of the rack under that kind of a situation. Because, you know, the rack is really a vital part of the beach in terms of all the species that make use of it and all the reasons that we've talked about. Having said that, you know, if there is a situation where the Health Department here determined that there would be, that there is a public health risk, we would work with you, and we would have to consult with, we would have to come back before the CONCOM again. I think the Health Department would probably, would also have to go before the CONCOM, and we would have to check with the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act folks, the Natural Heritage Program, because we would be removing, you know, materials that they consider habitat, vital habitat or vital part of the habitat for the species that we're managing.
Yes, sir. And then just one other question that's not, not related to seaweed apparently, is the bacteria, the regular bacteria testing of the beach and the waterfronts? What are the, what are the most common causes of those spikes in bacteria that will close our beaches down in terms of, like, what should we be doing as a town? What could we be doing as conservative citizens to try to reduce the effects that we have on those, on those bacteria blooms? We want our beaches closed as little as possible.
Absolutely.
So what are some of the most common causes of that?
Well, I think anywhere we have a problem with combined sewer flows, so you have the stormwater going into sewage lines, I don't know if that's the case here in Winterup or not. You folks would know better than I.
Not here, yeah.
And that's kind of an older thing, I think we used to see throughout towns, it's probably been updated, but that was a big source of nutrients to the coast. And then any old point sources that you know of that might be out there, so a pipe that, you know. And then, you know, in terms of homeowners and citizens, you know, reducing the amount of fertilizer you're using in your private yard, if you live within a certain distance of the beach where you're essentially within, you know, you see the water from your yard running into a culvert that ends up going out to the beach, you know, that kind of a situation. Anything we can do to reduce the amount of nutrients getting into the ocean is going to reduce alcohol blooms and contamination problems like that.
That's great information. Thank you very much.
Councilor Swob.
Thank you for coming. We, I have some questions, mostly because I'm relatively, well, new to the beach essentially, maybe 10 years, that's new in Winterup, by the way. Have we always had all of those rocks there?
No.
And, and my point about that is that what the concern of the citizens that I speak with are three things. One, getting onto the beach, onto Winterup Beach, which is a problem, and if you can help us with that, that would be great. Two, the rocks were dumped there and they're big, and it has restricted the amount of beach that we have. Now, I understand that that was, I think, a help to prevent some of the flooding that was coming over the wall, which I used to see a lot more of, and I do now. So, but they're ugly, frankly. And they look, they don't, they don't look like the beach used to look. Three, thanks to Erin Murray that she, she was kind enough to take some pictures of this. I probably, you have seen these pictures. If you haven't, the point is that there is, there's a huge wooden board in the water. There are lots, there's lots of trash. And when I, when I did speak to DCR, because I was down there one day, and I said, can you help us clean this up? I mean, there are, he said, well, it's very hard for us to get the equipment over there. We'll see what we can do. And I said, well, aren't you on a regular cycle to come here? He said, yes, we are, but sometimes it's hard to get our type of equipment onto your beach. And I'm thinking, it's hard for me to even walk down to the beach. So there are lots of pictures here that suggest not just the seaweed, it's trash. And when you start running on the beach with that seaweed, by the way, I don't run, but when I walk on the beach, the sand, the flies and the insects that are coming out of that seaweed, and the smell, it ruins for us. It's not a happy, I'm not a happy camper about it. So I appreciate, I really do appreciate the environment. So, I appreciate, I really do appreciate the environmental issues here. But I think some of what has been created down there is, is the lack of care. If I go to, if I go to Revere Beach, it's not like that. Now, is Revere Beach an intertidal, coastal intertidal beach?
Yeah, it's not a, yeah.
Right? That's what I thought. So, that means that we're treated, that this beach is treated a bit differently than their beach, is that correct?
That be, Revere Beach is, because it doesn't have the same geomorphology, it's, doesn't present as many challenges in terms of raking. Because the raking machine, again, that we, we have access to, first of all, would probably break down if we dragged it across your beach.
No doubt.
Because we do, we push it to the limits already. We do, we do as far as.
You all, you need to get a different raking machine for us. That's the bottom line. I'm not, I mean, not.
People hear that it's not treated, it's not treated differently from Revere. We're still operating under the same, it's act conditions, permits, everything. It is just the logistics of taking care of Winthrop can be different from a flat sandy beach like Revere.
Yeah, and I can, I can see that, it's larger, there's more sand, it's, you know. But I'm just saying, it, for us, this is a pride and joy for us. And if you could, whatever you can do, or whatever you can pass on to our president, Town Council, please let us know. Because I think there are a lot of people here that moved here because of the beach and they just want to be able to use it. And right now, you got to get on it first. And I, so, maybe that's something you could do to, to help. We could.
We will definitely pass along all of the information we gathered tonight. And relative to the debris, like the wood.
Yeah.
In fact, we were down at the beach and there was a, looked like a four by four.
Right.
Yeah, and you know.
That's it.
That should be taken care of.
Yeah.
So, we will pass that on to the operations folks.
And there are cups and stuff like, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need help.
Yeah, so.
Pass it on to your good folks.
We will.
Councilor Duarte?
Eric and Liz, thank you for being here. This one is near and dear to my heart because I represent Precinct Six, which is the northern half of Winthrop Beach. Vice President Belcher in Precinct Three represents the southern half of Winthrop Beach as well as Euro Beach. So, great discussion, we appreciate your work and appreciate all the information. I've taken a whole page of notes, so thank you for taking us to school on Winthrop. As Councilor Swob just said, I would be remiss if I didn't express the frustration of many residents of the town, but particularly the residents of my neighborhood. I live on Coral Ave, at the other end of the block, one block from Winthrop Beach. I also used to coordinate weekend beach cleanups for three years. We did not do it last summer, because frankly, the, the trash situation was starting to get a little better. But I also coordinate the yoga classes that are sponsored by Save the Harbor, Save the Bay, and Friends of Winthrop Beach every Sunday morning. And I can tell you that I do notice, walking the beach, that the trash situation has kind of gone in the other direction. And I do know that you guys have limited resources, that there are folks out there on a cycle cleaning up. But to Councilor Swob's point, it's really frustrating. I've had a lot of residents say essentially what Councilor Swob just said. We intentionally lived in a beach community, some of us intentionally lived by a beach. And because of this situation, a lot of the beach is unusable, essentially. I'm happy to report that at last Sunday's yoga class, where we're starting to have 50 people attend with regular attendance, so encourage everybody to come. We have our, our yoga classes right at that Cutler Street entrance, and we walk right up to about, you know, 15 or 20 feet in front of the waves.
Yep.
So, what I love is when you can strike a balance, trust me, there's nothing better than doing a yoga class, hearing our instructor Pete's wonderful thick Revere Beach accent, and seeing seagulls and hearing them and watching those little plovers walk by you as you're doing yoga. So when you can marry the two in a balanced way, it can be magic. Right now, it's anything but balanced. That one section where we have yoga class and the immediate area surrounding it, where we've got the two roped-off areas for the nesting, where you guys do raking, where you do the sand raking. That seems to be the one consistent usable part of the beach. This past Sunday, after lots of complaints, I was particularly curious to see if we would have a bug problem at yoga class. I'm happy to report we did not. We had a full hour of yoga. But I am aware that in the morning is a better time to catch less bugs as the day goes on into the afternoon and the evening. The bugs are really bad on the beach, and not just on the beach, I'm one block from the beach. Over the past few weeks, all of a sudden, my house is surrounded by these bugs. And a lot of the residents in Precinct Six are telling me, if they live along the Shore Drive especially, even if they're a block back from the drive like I am, these bugs are all over the place. So I guess it's reassuring to hear Meredith Hurley say tonight that those particular bugs that are all over us do not pose, I think you said Meredith, a vector threat of disease, which is reassuring. But I'm just wondering, given everything you've told us tonight, is there, I'm wondering what we can do? And totally, yet you guys did a great job of explaining the limitations that we have due to the law. I think the tough part for us is, to Councilor Swob's point, we see a Revere Beach that isn't restricted in this way. We see a town beach at Euro Beach where we actually have had mechanized rakers and folks from the DPW helping us address the problem on Euro. We're sandwiched in between the two of Winthrop Beach, seemingly stuck with this problem. So one thing I said to Town Manager Marino was, you know, we've had a lot of volunteers. We come to yoga class and they're just residents around who say, "Look, can we help? Can we help with the cleanup effort? Could they possibly bring some kind of mechanized raker where, you know, five or six of us will literally walk in front of it as we keep our eyes peeled for, you know, plovers and turns and anything that might disrupt? And can we at least, you know, you made an interesting comment, Eric, about usually the guideline is if you're going to remove any of this seaweed, you typically would stop at one third, like no more than one third?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if there's a way that maybe in the, in the section that's just north of where we do yoga, near the color area, even if we could clear the, you know, one-third of the seaweed that's closest to that area, it, it wouldn't help the northernmost part of the beach, but at least it would clear out more space in the middle of the beach for people to use. Because again, we didn't experience a bug problem, thankfully, at yoga. But at least if we could do some kind of clearing up to a third and just expand that space, is that something you think we could do?
One issue that comes to mind is that, at this time of year, so the other component of the conditions that are on us, one of the constraints is also that when we accomplish beach raking, we do have shorebird monitors present to make sure that during the raking period, we don't have any unfledged piped plover chicks or lease turns that are within the raking zone. We can't rake, and we can't push, it's considered take of an endangered species, to push birds out of an area in order to accomplish the cleaning with a vehicle. So one issue that comes to mind during, in that, in that particular area during this time of year is that there are unfledged chicks right there, where we would not be able to, we would not be able to accomplish that with a vehicle.
There are unfledged chicks?
In fr- right in front of both of those roped-off areas.
Yep.
For most of the season, including all of this month, there are unfledged endangered species in that area.
Outside of the fence.
Yep, they go between the fence and the water line. And we're very careful to keep space open between the fenced area and the water line, but the birds still utilize that area, so it's still considered. So we're still restricted on what we can do in that area.
So even, even, even an ar- a small army of residents going in front of those rakers would not do the trick?
Well, if we're talking by hand and things that we're doing by hand, that changes the game.
Yeah.
So it's about mechanized versus not?
Yep.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So beach raking is a good way to accomplish some of this. That might not be addressing the seaweed, which again, really can only be removed if it's contaminated and deemed a public health problem right there. But if it's trash, if it's debris and it's inaccessible to vehicle access, then doing it by hand or organizing folks to do it by hand in numbers is strength.
Okay.
Definitely accomplishable.
I think we may be able to assemble a small army, so that sounds, that sounds like a follow-up that we could do after tonight's stuff.
Okay.
And I appreciate that, because I'm trying to focus on what we can do. I totally understand the restrictions, but trying to look at something that we can do.
Yeah, and I, I did want to make a comment about the, it looks like the very far northern beach where it starts to bend around there. And I think this is, maybe the area you were talking about, there's a lot of seaweed up in the very cobble area, the digger stones that have been exposed over time.
Which is, a lot of that is that bur- that is that placed berm from, historically. So a lot of that part of the beach, the northern end, that berm is there, that was placed there and is still doing its job.
Yes.
By being there.
Right.
It gets a little different when we're talking about the southern end of the beach. That's heavy cobble, but it does exist there naturally and the same as we're working out with it. Those rocks are pieces.
Yeah, yeah.
The northern end.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the rocks in the northern end.
Yeah.
The joke in the beach tree suppose you used to be able to reach down and grab your dinner as the floodwaters rolled by, including the poor on my street. So, we, we appreciate the, the purpose that that berm is, is serving. But it, you know, the downside is that the seaweed attaches itself to it.
Right, yeah, that was my point. Like, trying to manage the seaweed in a situation like that would be extraordinarily difficult.
Yeah.
But.
Sounds like we may have a follow-up though, to some kind of manual raking we might be able to. Thank you.
And I'm happy to stay in touch if you'd like.
Please.
Um, I can be in my office long if you need.
Please, sounds good. Yeah, let's touch base.
Okay, for sure.
Thank you. We, we appreciate your time. I also appreciate the councilors for being very professional in their comments because it is definitely an issue that is extremely frustrating for us.
Yeah.
And the citizens, right? It is not the beach I grew up going to. You know, the cobble is thousands of truckloads of cobble that was brought in, not indigenous there.
Yeah.
And, and, and we do look at other beaches in, in terms of lifeguards, in terms of walking paths to get out. And we just seem like the, you know, ugly stepchild that doesn't want to get any attention. And it's, and it's frustrating.
Yeah.
And we've had DCR here a few years back, and we were promised all kinds of stuff, and it just doesn't come to fruition. My understanding is, I received an email with literally a small circle in red in front of what used to be Rosetti's on the beach, and it was like, that's the only area that they can do anything with. Which, we have a mile of beach, basically, right? We have, has three miles from Rotary to Rotary, we have a mile, basically, from the Greenboughs down to the southern end. And we have yards, hundreds of yards of beach that is actually left, and it's just so frustrating. And at least to, you know, to protect what we do have and to have proper lifeguards and to have the walking paths and to have dedicated response on, I guess it's every Monday to come down and do what we can, to encourage us, if we can do something, if we can gather people and help, we'll help. But we need some direction and, and we need, you know, I understand the environmental concerns, but I also look at the citizens' concerns and the citizens have rights also. And it just seems like the swarming has been so infected in terms of quality of life issues, in terms of, you know, getting calls on a daily basis, like people walking from the top of the beach down to an office on, on Shirley Street saying, "I'm getting inundated." And, and it's good to know it's not hazardous to your health, but it's still a nuisance to your public, for your life. So if, if, if you can, and I'd appreciate contact information also, get us, you know, in terms of lifeguards, why does Revere get lifeguards at such an early time of the year and we are kind of left out? Walking paths also that are there constantly in Revere that we are kind, and we're walking over hazardous materials in terms of, you know, cobble and such that other beaches aren't. So we would even require them more. But if you could, you know, I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I'm asking for communication line to remain open. You know, I think every one of us has been extremely complimentary of you coming here, thankful for you coming here, but expecting some answers in return is annoying.
Absolutely, yeah. As I said, I don't, and you're right, I don't have the answers to more operations ends of things, but I will absolutely pass this information on to our operations team. And I would like to stay in touch.
Yep.
About, you know, if there is a volunteer event, you know, I think we could help out or participate in some ways.
This town is great about volunteering for lots of stuff. That shouldn't be an issue. We will.
I can tell by the turnout tonight.
And we see people, we see people walking with bags and cleaning up on their own too, and we always appreciate it big time, so we know how much Winthrop cares about your beach.
Again, I want to thank Jeannie and Meredith, if you, if the two of you have anything you'd like to add. Do it now, no, Jeannie, anything?
Uh, no, I mean Christine is the Board of Health Chairman.
Oh, and Christine.
Just as a personal comment, one of the things, and I've heard everything that they've said, but you know, we as citizens have to take some responsibility as well because the trash on the beach was not put there by the birds. It was not put there by nature. The trash on the beach was put there by us. And we should take responsibility to pick up our trash, put it in the barrels, or take it off the beach when we leave. So some of that, we're responsible for.
Thank you. Again, we thank you very much for coming. We hope to see you soon, we hope to hear from you even sooner. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I use my phone, my office phone?
Yes, please.
Yeah, you can, I can take it down.
Okay, um, six one seven?
Yep.
Six three four.
You might know who to say that to.
Everybody, everybody take notes.
I can, I can coordinate that for you, I can get that. Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want to take these pictures?
A small army might call you directly.
Live on the edge.
I think that'll help, thank you, please.
Thank you, sir.
It's, it's, well, okay, done. Thank you.
Yes, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're very thankful for that. We also have, in the same agenda, is to give an update ourselves on Euro Beach and the situation. So.
Thank you.
Between Director Cala.
Yeah, Director, I'll start off and like, let's Director, Director Cala jump in. We've been doing, you know, daily, for the most part, every two, two or three hours in the morning. We're thankful enough that we have a shorebird specialist on staff, Susannah Corona. So we have, unlike DCR where they've only got access to that person one day a week, we've got every day a week, every day of the week, we can have Susannah there to guide the process with the beach raking on Euro Beach. We've been, you know, working it diligently, as they talked about though, every time a tide comes in, you know, you do it at low tide, the tide brings the seaweed right back in, which is why we're out there daily. Where staffing issues are a little bit of a concern, you know, leading up to the Fourth of July. After the Fourth of July, we get a lot more high school and college employees that come to work, you know, through the Massport program, so we'll have them available right after the Fourth of July. We don't need anything from conservation as we're working under the administrative consent order and the beach management plan, which the guy, you know, dictates what we can and can't do out there on the beach. You know, the rack line, obviously, was, was stuck to that, we can remove by hand, you know, as we get up above the rack line and take out the piles of seaweed, and we've been doing that as we move along. We did reach out to MWRA, you know, because obviously there's a large pile of seaweed on the Boston side at the end of Euro Beach. They've got the similar restrictions that, you know, the state has, and they can't really get down there to remove that. We did ask them to do that, but they have told us that they cannot. So hopefully the tides will come in and eventually take that out. But right now, that's nothing we can deal with on the MWRA side. And I'll certainly let Director Cala jump in. Is there anything more?
Not all that much more to add. Like I said, we're out there as much as we can accommodate manpower being out there. Right now, you know, two hours a day, four days a week, we're not able to do five, eight hours a week is pushing us still pretty thin, but we've been committed to it, we'll continue to be committed to it. It is beneficial that we do have a certified bird spotter on staff. Of course, it's not her only job, you know, that she's a, you know, in the labor force. So, we'll continue to, to, to do what we do and, and hopefully the birds fledge sooner than later and we can expand our raking as well, so.
Thank you. Couple of questions if you have on Euro, Vice President Belcher?
Thank you, um, thank you to Director Cala and the DPW team, I do see you guys out there and that is, is great.
Well, I'll just, I'll take it.
Sorry, I'm going to fly. Are we still able to take off like the one-third of the seaweed? Like, is that the, what we're kind of operating under on Euro? Like is that what we're kind of operating under on Euro? As far as how much we're taking off the beach as far as seaweed?
I mean, we don't really, on Euro Beach, I don't know if you've been out there lately, the rack line is, it's pretty well dispersed. And I think we've been doing a pretty good job, you know, picking it up. We're, we're, within two hours of time each day, we're taking about, you know, a truckload of, you know, small dump truck load of seaweed off the beach. And like D C I did speak of, we're also challenged with the cobble's down there, you know, and the rakes certainly don't work as well on cobble as they do on sand, so. They were pretty thorough with their explanation, you know, I can relate to it, we're dealing with the same challenges.
Is there anything in the same line as Counselor DeRosa's question? Is there anything that a volunteer workforce could do that you guys aren't able to get to? Is this something we should think about?
Volunteers can only help, absolutely. You know, but it doesn't help to pick up stuff and leave it down below the low tide waterline because we can't get out there, right? So if we're going to organize a cleanup event, we're going to get that material to a spot that we can access.
Okay, that'll be excellent. If I can connect with you later to try and coordinate that, that would be great.
Any other questions for Director?
Just a comment, thank you, Mr. President. Town Manager, Director Cala, thank you very much for that. Hard work you're putting your teams through to keep that as clean as we can. I think Jeannie, I believe, was the member of the Public Health, but she put it very, very well the last time we, we talked about when Winter Beach is like, you gotta take responsibility for what we're bringing onto the beach and make sure that we're, if we carry in, we carry out, take all of our trash with us. That's another thing that we could remind people of when they're visiting Euro Beach as well as Winter Beach.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Moving on, we have one public hearing tonight. Is National Grid here? Is it?
Yes.
Great, if you could come right up to the desk, please. So we have a public hearing on National Grid number three one 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 six six five six is the north sidewalk of Main Street. This is part of the TIPS project going on, if you would like to be heard.
Yes, thank you very much. Everyone, my name is Rafael Greglen, National Grid, one seventy minutes for a stream moment. In this case, this is a job that we have been dealing with, D E C Corp is the, I think that is the designer of the project. It's kind of simple, we just want like to ask addition, we have them, they told us that it's for the city, they are changing the traffic control boxes. So this is one of the two projects that actually we have been doing with them. It's in Main Street with Winter Street. Actually, it's like in three oh, three zero eight Main Street in front of four months auto repair. So in the four, any four four, they're going to be doing, installing some conduits, like two, no, two, three inches conduit, like twenty-five feet from the pole. And it will be installing three number six cable just to connect the traffic control box. All the job is going to be done by then, we're just going to be connecting them on the pole.
Thank you. Director Cala, do you have anything to add?
No, it's, it is, it's part of the TIP project, the work is needed to poll that intersection, to repoll that intersection. Dable Electric is the subcontractor for, and they'll be doing the work. Should have zero impact on really anybody.
Is it McGee's Corner?
It's at McGee's Corner, yeah, it comes past, it's a little bit, it's about a house down from McGee's Corner on the Main Street side is where they're going to pick up the power and bring it over to the building.
And when is this going to be done?
Well, after the petition, probably because it's from the city, actually they'll take it between eight to twelve weeks from now.
Eight to twelve weeks from now to?
To connect them, yeah. It depends, I don't know if the contractor rings, do his job. So it depends on that, but we cannot connect them without your permission, so this is the.
No, I understand, permission is needed, I didn't understand.
The conduits are already.
It's already, okay. So it's already, so we can use like, it's a simple job because if you're connecting them, we don't need to do anything else.
Thank you.
Probably within like four weeks.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any opponents of this from the public wish to be heard? Any opponents of this from the public wish to be heard? Thank you, Director Cala, thank you very much for closing the public hearing. Appreciate your time. Public comment is open. Yes, sir.
Brian Perrin, Precinct Three. Your last two meetings were low point for winter politics. What I witnessed wasn't just inappropriate, it was cruel. Counselor DiMarco was publicly targeted and humiliated over personal absences that should have been addressed at the executive session so he could defend those absences and explain any deeply personal reasons behind them. That opportunity and the due process he was owed was denied. But what makes this even more disturbing is the hypocrisy. Mr. Ayello.
If we could try to keep names out.
What's that?
If we could try to keep personal names out.
First, I better write. Mr. Ayello, you're the same council who was caught on camera during a council meeting taunting a citizen of this town with profanity and then hiding behind your council seat to do it. You're the very same council that had to be physically removed from one space to another for the similar behavior with another council member. Sorry, I'm very angry. If we're talking about real grounds for removal, those are what they are, disrespect, lack of decorum. Let's not pretend this was about attendance with Counselor DiMarco. His removal was motivated by the desire to sway the three A vote, something that was all but stated outright during these attacks. It was calculated, it was political and it undermines the public trust in the integrity of this council. Then came the vote against Karen Chavez for the precinct two vacancy. That wasn't about qualifications. It was another move of the same powerful way, another deliberate attempt to control the outcome of a three A vote, no matter the cost of fairness or public voice. I've worked with Karen in my roles on the school committee, the retirement board, town meeting and as you're selecting. Her service has always been grounded in integrity, humility and love for this town. And let's be honest, many of you came into these council seats without having a lot of volunteer experience or experience running this town. And quite frankly, the last two meetings have showed that. The lack of decorum, the personal attacks, the disregard for process and public input, it's embarrassing. Frankly, you need Karen Chavez on this council to teach you at a minimum how to behave professionally and like adults. These actions are not isolated, they're part of a larger pattern of secrecy, manipulation and a growing disrespect for the people you were elected to serve. You all know how I oppose three A. My analysis was correct when I explained it to you and it was proved in court. But I'll accept any outcome, win or lose if the process is fair. What I won't accept is a rigged system, hidden agendas and the weaponization of public service. And one last comment, to quote Sandra Day O'Connor, "You can disagree without being disagreeable." And I wish you all think about that.
Anyone else?
I don't think we can improve on that.
Jim?
All right.
I do.
Yes.
I had no idea that Pope Kim Dyer is precinct two, Chairperson of the Conservation Commission. I coincidentally decided tonight that I was going to talk about the Coast Sweep program. It's sponsored by Coastal Zone Management Office of, from the state of Massachusetts. It's a late August to, through November, thousands of volunteers throughout Massachusetts turn out for Coast Sweep, the annual statewide beach cleanup sponsored by C Z M. It's in part of the International Coastal Cleanup organized by Ocean Conservancy in Washington, D.C. Volunteers from all over the world collect marine debris, trash fishing line and other human-made items and report what they find. This information is then analyzed and used to identify sources of marine debris and develop education and policy initiatives to help reduce it. The website is mass.gov forward slash coast sweep. Sign up to volunteer for existing cleanup or the Conservation Commission, we're going to sponsor one for the Euro Beach this year. And once that posts in August on C Z M's website, anyone is welcome to sign up to participate with that with us. But this is open to anyone, once again, mass.gov forward slash coast sweep.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Dow.
Jack Dow, Precinct One. The gentleman and the nice lady up here stated on three or four different topics that what's happened, it's natural. There's nothing natural about any inch of the front beach on Euro Beach, nothing. There used to be a release of pressure from different storms that went through Shirley Gut, that was filled in. And then when the Mass Water Resource built their facility on Thirion, they filled in the tideland. So that has directly impacted Euro Beach. There's no release. The longshore current goes from north to south. So what used to be, if the water would come down from north to south and then wash through either Shirley Gut or the tideland, the tidelands I think were probably about ten acres. And so that protected Shirley, that protected Shirley Point and Point Shirley and it protected the sand. By the way, as far as the birds were concerned, I was down there last year and at a certain point, I counted twenty ploids on the south end and all the seaweed was dumped on top of their nesting area. So you get six of one and half dozen of the other, so what's to protect? It's always evolving, everything can change with one storm, we've seen it. They brought this sand in from Route One and that was supposed to be it. After one storm, thirty-five feet of that sand was lost, so then they brought that rock in. All right, so it worked. But when they brought the sand in, they brought in, it's called lambsquads, it's a ragweed. It grows about this tall and it's like an oak tree, you can't even, if you hit it with an axe, it won't break. It's very, very strong. It could take over the whole shoreline, that's not, so. There's nothing natural about what's happening on Shore Drive. Everything is man-made down there. We don't know what's going to happen with the next storm, it could be anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom, Denise?
No.
Yes.
Lee Foley, Precinct Six. I just have an issue that I wanted to bring up that you guys know was involved with Board of Health and D P W. The roadworks happening on Revere Street, there's a lot of dust being coming up. There's a lot of elderly people living right next door in Governor's Park. And I was wondering if there's any way that that portion of the roads, wherever it is, is kept moist or sprayed like on a daily basis? Because I think it's very dangerous for people with asthma and lung conditions, especially the elderly.
Thank you. Yes, Master.
Hi, Marcy Hamilton, Precinct Two. I don't have a T-shirt, I don't have a bullhorn and I don't have a precinct counselor for Precinct Two.
We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, can't hear you. Oh, I'll speak up a little bit. As I said, I don't have a T-shirt, I don't have a bullhorn and I don't have a counselor for Precinct Two. I do have a promise from this board and a promise to have the Girlstone, Tileston and other areas that were promised to be fixed. And I heard Mr. Cala say at the last meeting that there's no money, he needs the money. I heard Mr. Hyatt say he doesn't have the money for the permitting. And I look forward to the communication and the determination and the commitment to these phases that were so well explained by the Conservation Committee and they did their work beautifully. And now we're at a Band-Aid approach. So I hope this council moves forward and it communicates with the neighborhoods that are affected, not only mine, but all the areas that are affected, how they're going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Cala.
I just want to say real quick, a lot of people quote me, they're not really the actual quotes, so let me just clarify some of those things. Last meeting I spoke to this, there's a bucket of things that get down into town and that we need these grants to get that work done. And to clarify your comment, Pico, Girlstone, Tileston, that money has been allocated to the engineering. So that work is progressing.
Is the permitting, I'm, don't mean.
The permitting is part of that engineering.
So that has been declared and that we're moving.
What hasn't been identified yet is the funding for the construction.
Okay, so we're almost up there, we're up to phase three.
Not communicating, but thank you, thank you. Okay. Correspondents, Denise?
No, I received none.
Committee reports, O R C.
Sure. So the O R C is. Thank you. The O R C has been meeting weekly. We have concluded our look at the charter and we'll be recommending some changes to the council. The council will probably have them by the tenth or so to be voted on in July. The committee did a lot of work looking at every piece of the charter step by step. And I think we have some really good pieces of, or some good suggestions for discussion when it comes to the council. So we should be getting those very soon.
Thank you. Firehouse Building Committee has not met formally, but a subcommittee met earlier this afternoon. We're looking at responses for an F R Q we did on an architect and we received six responses, I believe. Five of them were, five of them met the criteria. The committee looked them over and they made a recommendation. That recommendation will be brought to the full Firehouse Building Committee meeting on the sixteenth. At that time, the Firehouse Building Committee meeting, Firehouse Building Committee will vote on the architect and we're assuming that we will hit the ground running with that. Everything else is still where we thought it would be. We will probably be going towards remediation of asbestos in probably late September. It'll probably take four to six weeks to do that and immediately thereafter, we would start the demolition. So still, the plan is by the end of calendar year twenty-six, the building will be leveled. In the process, we will be going through public hearings, public meetings, getting architectural renderings, getting input from the public on every aspect of the project. So we encourage you to stick around and participate in that. School Department report, school committee met last evening. It was a very small agenda list, we had to revote the school budget for fiscal twenty-six with the override and with the final recommendations from the town on the budget, the final budget had to be revoked, which we did. And we also spent a good chunk of time at the meeting celebrating Shannon and her accomplishments. So it was, as good as it was here tonight, it was even better last night with her discussion of all the incredible people that she met in New York City, some of her mentors and reasons why she became so interested in journalism. So it was a great conversation at the school committee and it's so nice to be able to celebrate, especially such a recent graduate. So again, thank you, Shannon, for that. There's no update right now, I believe, on policy making committees. So Town Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, I submitted the report. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. We did submit to the council and looks up on the website as well, the fiscal analysis report from R K G. They weren't available tonight, but they will be available at a future meeting to answer questions. So if you have any questions on that report, certainly forward them over to us and you'll be able to answer them at the next meeting that we schedule and have time to put them in. I thought of the report was well done, I was happy with the outcomes. You know, certainly on us to take that data now and see as we develop the town, you know, what sort of impact it's going to have on our schools, fire, police and, you know, what sort of actions we need to take as a town to, you know, to remedy them or make space or, you know, make it. increase in tax benefit to the town versus condos versus apartments. You know, we're restricted with what we can assess, you know, given the state guidelines with apartments. But it's definitely, you know, you'll notice that when you take a look at the report, there's a big jump in, you know, tax impact on that. So other than that, I just wanted to, again, compliment the Fire Department and all our public safety personnel for the, you know, fire we had on, over the weekend. Thankfully, no one was hurt. While the house was a total loss and certainly down quickly, the job they did to protect this, you know, the two multifamily buildings on either side of it was heroic. I mean, they, I was concerned that night, we were talking on the phone, thinking about putting people up and, you know, people maybe having to vacate those homes, but they did a great job, other than some melted vinyl siding, they were able to get people back in the house that night. So kudos to them and they always, you know, make us proud. So thank you. Certainly, I wonder if any questions?
And I will say again, on the, with the Fire Department and as well as with the police, Fire Department was incredible, especially Captain Montgomery and Group 3. They were the first ones on scene, just did a remarkable job. And when they got to the site, the house was so engulfed in flames and I'm sure a lot of you have seen pictures on social media and such. It was crazy. And they thought at the time that there was a resident in there from what they had heard. They tried to do an initial inspection on the first floor, then through sheer luck, thank God, there was nobody in there. And then they went to their next obligation, which was to protect, you know, protect the houses next door on either side of them. And it's amazing, there was, I think, a six family on the left and a three family on the right. And to see the vinyl siding, vinyl fence in between the two that just melted completely and the vinyl siding melting off the side of the house. But thank God, other than that, no injuries, you know, no total loss or anything like that to those buildings. They did a remarkable job and you had, obviously, Winthrop, you had Everett, Revere, Chelsea, Massport, and even Boston was on the call. They didn't have to physically come, but, you know, the police putting up a perimeter line and just doing such a great job, keeping the public safe and keeping them out. But the fire, the firemen, it's amazing. I mean, Council DeRoz was there, I was there and, you know, you hear of a fire, but to just be that close and to feel the heat. And thank God, it was a relatively calm night, not much wind at all. It was at 5:30, 6:30 in the afternoon, so it was, it could have been so much worse and it's just a blessing. But even in those relatively timid conditions, it's just amazing, the work that they do. So thank you to Chief Wiley, the whole department, and especially Group 3 and Captain Montgomery. Thank you again for all you did. And just one question, I mean, I have many questions on this report, which we won't go into tonight, but, and I encourage all councils to get all questions and hopefully at the next council meeting that we'll be able to secure them here and we'll have many questions following them in terms of the report. If anybody has anything else on those two subjects, Council DeRoz.
Thank you, Council President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we just address one thing because there was a public comment on dust and stuff coming up. Is there anything that we do do for that?
They have been watering. I agree, maybe not as frequently, but they do water daily. It's dry, there's a lot of traffic there and we meet up with them daily to remind them. But they've been watering at least three times a day with their watering truck on the open road. So, you know, that is their maintenance obligation, you know, for the dirt and they have been doing it. We'll try to get them to do it more.
Thank you.
And they are paving on July 11th, that section overnight like they did before, and then they'll start working their way up Revere Street for, you know, the next segment, so.
Council DeRoz, have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Council President. Thank you, Tony, for putting the mention of the fire in the Town Manager Report. In addition to the actions of Meredith and the clear team to reach out to the family, I just want to give a quick shout out to my precinct. I live at the end of Coral Street, at the Shirley intersection. So over the last couple of years now, we've been sandwiched by two terrible destructive fires, one of the apartment building now at 43 Trident. And as Council President said, he and I were both out there for about three hours with firefighters. So I just want to give a shout out, we did this in person, obviously, but a shout out to Chief Wiley, all the firefighters, Winthrop Police. We also had Chelsea and Revere Fire on site, helping in a big way. And Chief Wiley was telling me that, you know, it's routine that we do the same in those communities to help out. So nice to see the community come together in a lot of ways in our surrounding communities. There's been a lot of wonderful offers of help for the family in terms of, you know, finances, GoFundMe page, that kind of thing. Meredith and her team, as well as other neighbors, reached out to the family and to the homeowner. And he and the family said, "Thank you very, very much, but at this point, we're good." So we sent them a note to say if that changes, let us know. We've got a lot of people who are ready to pitch in and help. So just wanted people to know, there are a lot of questions coming to us about whether they needed that support. So acknowledge everybody in the community for offering that kind of support. Makes me feel really good about this town, our community, my neighborhood. And again, I can't emphasize enough, just as the Council President said, it's one thing to hear Chief Wiley when we were doing the discussions about, you know, building a new firehouse and passing the debt exclusion. You might remember Chief Wiley came to our meetings with a little card that he keeps in his pocket that lists out all of the health hazards that firefighters face through their work. It's one thing to read the list, it's another thing for us to stand there for three hours across the street and just feel the impact of the heat, breathe in the smoke even when you try to avoid it. I just walked away with an entire new appreciation for what our firefighters go through all the time. So I just want to express my thanks and the thanks of everybody that listened, I mean, to the firefighters and everybody that was there that night. Really, really appreciate everything you give.
Council Swope?
I too want to say to Chief Wiley and the firefighters, that was, that was an amazing effort. And another perspective that might be interesting to some of you, I only, I don't know all the firefighters, but I do know one, Mark Farillo, and I know his mom. And he is not only a firefighter, he's a master electrician. So when he goes to a fire, he also has some other expertise. But his mother watched him go toward that fire when everybody else was fleeing and she's still, I mean, she's proud of him, but also, as just as a mom, she knows that that can be a very dangerous situation. So that, you're right, you're right, Council DeRoz and President Littori, it is a dangerous job and we appreciate it. The new materials that are coming on with new buildings, I, may correct me if I'm wrong, Council, Town Manager Moreno, but those new materials are not quite as resistant as some of the materials we're using now, before, because they're pressed wood and other things. There are new techniques, however, in building that might help us make sure that we are safe in those deterrents. So it, as we, as we talk, as the planning committee talks and as the ordinance committee talks, make sure that we all understand that we are doing everything we can to make sure that we are safe in fire. I think some of you have brought up the fact about the height, they wanted to make sure that there's going to be ladders available there, et cetera. And one other thing, and this is not necessarily a point to that, but I have watched Mr. Calla, sometimes I'm not as complimentary as others of you are, and I apologize for that at times, but Steve Calla works on issues in a very timely way. And I saw him, I went down to Nehan Avenue, there was an issue, a concern about a possible pipe. Not only did he bring his truck down there the next day, not only did they examine each pipe on Nehan Avenue, but he explained to the homeowner what the situation was. And as I told him when I was standing there, I said, "After this job, it's voc ed for you." Because I think that his clear communication really makes a difference in this town and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Council President.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo Council Swope and Council DeRoz in saying thank you and great credit to the Winthrop Fire Department for their courage and their hard work. And thank you to the, those who in our neighboring communities came in and provided mutual aid during that fire this weekend. Can't say thank you enough for what they do and they're doing it every day. And that's all I have. I'm looking forward to talking a bit more about that fiscal impact analysis. It was a surprise to me. So I will, we'll talk more about that when we get them in, right?
Yeah. Very quickly. One thing I forgot to mention, just FYI, and I believe Jim knew about this, but I didn't know about this group. Directly across the street from where the fire was taking place, there's an organization called Boston Sparks. Any idea about Boston Sparks? I didn't know who they were, but I noticed a handful of guys setting up a table that was full of snacks and cold water and seats, kind of like a row of beach chairs, basically, all for the firefighters and the police officers. They needed a drink, they needed a snack, they needed a seat. So go to bostonsparks.com. I know I'll plan to make a donation to this group, but it's all volunteer and they're funded by donations. And they show up, they're literally listening to scanners showing up on the scene when this happens, employing themselves as volunteers. And we saw the firefighters going across the street multiple times, grabbing water, grabbing snacks, having a seat. So it's, I just want to give a shout out to Boston Sparks because those guys, I'm told by Chief Wiley, that a lot of those guys are aspiring firefighters. So this is kind of their way of starting to participate in this. So just want to give them a shout out. Great organization.
Council Costigan?
Yeah, accolades to the Winthrop Fire Department as well. It doesn't surprise me. You have a hell of a team here in the town of Winthrop, led by Chief Wiley and Deputy Chief Calander as well. You know, as I mentioned, I was witness on Veterans Road, that fire in that multiple building there where Lieutenant Rich climbed the ladder and proceeded to extinguish the fire himself, that one unit. Doesn't surprise me to see that Winthrop ladders were there first. The high tension wire is above, as a safety program manager had me concerned, but to see the resources come in from other towns is just a testament to, you know, our need for help when we need it. So, and again, taking nothing away from Winthrop Fire, tremendous job, tremendous job. I know we can't talk about the physical impact analysis here, but I do have multiple questions as it relates to some of the data here. And I know I wish RKG was here tonight, but I think there's a lot to go through here as it relates to some numbers. And I would just stress the importance of not forwarding any of this information until we, the council, agree that the numbers are proper and we are transparent. So let me close it there. Thank you, Town Public...
And again, I encourage councilists to get questions together.
Correct.
Send them to the Town Manager and have RKG be able to respond to them.
Thank you, President.
Council DeMarco, did...
There's nothing that hasn't already been said. Great job, Winthrop Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ayo?
Just one other quick perspective. I was in Miller Field with Tom DeDarian and a bunch of Winthrop and people from outside and someone noticed that first puff of gray smoke that later turned into black. It was incredible, the immediacy of hearing that first fire engine crank up and stop moving. The out-of-towners were shocked at how quickly they were able to just turn it on and respond. So another perspective and attribute to sort of how quick they were able to get to the scene. It's amazing.
Thank you. Old business, short-term rentals. Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. So after a long time, we have the final draft of the short-term rental ordinance. I made a chart to just briefly go over what exists in our ordinances currently and what this draft ordinance will tie up. For the general framework, the zoning for short-term rentals, so things like Airbnbs or anything like that, lives in our zoning ordinance and is managed by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the goal of this new ordinance was to bring it up to what we know Airbnb and these types of things to be now, to protect the residents that live in the neighborhoods that these operate in and the operators. The purpose is to protect public welfare, preserve housing stock, ensure compliance and enforcement clarity. There was very little teeth to the other ordinance, so if there was a complaint against an Airbnb, it was very hard to determine how that was handled. It, again, changes things from the Zoning Board of Appeals granting licenses to the Board of Licensing. There's also an inspection process with ISC and Public Health and Fire. The renewal schedule, they'll all renew on July 1st, so it'll be a little bumpy for the first year as everybody gets on cycle, but that should help move things along. There's also a cap in this ordinance on 1.5% of the housing stock in town is determined on July 1st. The idea behind this was so that we're not overrun by Airbnbs, but we don't want to make it too small so that people don't have the opportunity for an income stream. And again, these, any ordinance can be amended as we see it in practice and it does say in here that the council can amend that cap as well. This ordinance increases the fee structure. There's a $300 annual fee that increases 2.5% annually. This kind of sets us up in a good way to make sure that we're bringing in money to cover the increased cost of inspections and the administrative burden of these. Like I said, there's a limit on the number per, in the town, there's also a limit on registrations per owner. An owner can have one registered Airbnb per dwelling. In a multi-unit building, the max is two-thirds of the units that can be short-term rentals. So if you own a three-family, you can't have all three be short-term rentals, only two of those can. There's also an operator residency requirement where the owner must have their primary residence, it must be the owner's primary residence and they must live in Winthrop. LLCs cannot have a license, so it can only be individuals. They're not transferable, so if a property has a short-term rental license and that person sells their home, it does not now go to the next person, they'll have to apply. Eligible units include income-restricted units, ADUs, non-owner occupied units, and problem properties as defined by Inspection Services. There are also occupant limits. The maximum number of people in a short-term rental is two adults per bedroom or maximum six rentals per short-term rental. So if you had a four-bedroom place, you're still capped at six people. If you have two bedrooms, you're capped at four people. This will help make sure that people aren't using these for big bachelor parties or whatever and having like 20 people in one unit. The registration number is required to be displayed. The complaint process is better defined. There has to be an operator agent who can respond to the property within an hour if that isn't the owner. That has to be listed, so if anybody in the neighborhood has a problem, they can call police of the town and somebody will be able to respond. So those are the main changes. This has existed in a draft for a while. Former Councilor Jiro and Councilor Munson have worked on this. It's out with the Planning Board for a while and now we have it back. But I think it does a really nice job of protecting both the operators and the residents around Airbnbs.
Thank you, Vice President Belcher, for a tremendous amount of work we did with this over last year, probably. So it's greatly appreciated. So are you bringing a motion to the council?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is?
Motion is to approve the draft ordinance.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Tassanari. Motion is out for discussion. Council Swope?
Is that draft on the web, on the web?
It is not yet. It's in all of our emails, but I wanted to wait until it was approved before we put it online to avoid any confusion if there were amendments.
Okay. I must have missed it on my email, I haven't read it, but I've been to all your meetings, so I know. Good job.
Council Ayo?
So I just want to thank Council Belcher and really all the folks that worked on this over the last couple of years. This really meets the concerns that I've been worried about, which is public safety. Of making sure that if there's an Airbnb in your neighborhood, that you know who's there, that there's a person responsible for that building, the owner or the owner's agent that has to be accountable to get to the site if the police or fire or inspectional service requires it. We've raised the fee levels so that we can collect any violations of... Um, this really meets the concerns that I've been worried about, which is public safety. By making sure that if there's an Airbnb in your neighborhood, that you know who's there, that there's a person responsible for that building, the owner or the owner's agent that has to be accountable to get to the site if the police or fire or inspectional service requires it. Um, we've raised the fee levels so that we can collect any violations of people who have Airbnbs, but more importantly, those who are operating illegally, uh, so that we, we can self-fund the oversight of these and they don't come out of the general taxpayer's pocket. And we can also look for those who are operating illegally, which today we don't have the resources to do without going into the general fund of it. So I think it accomplishes all that. It really professionalizes and I like the cap as well. I think this strikes a really terrific balance. So, uh, just congratulations to Hannah, your leadership and then leadership from a bunch of the folks that you collaborated with.
Uh, Counselor.
Uh, Counsel President, can I ask the Vice President a question?
Absolutely.
Uh, Vice President Belcher, um, how, do we know exactly how many Airbnbs we have at the moment right now in town?
We think it's roughly around like 125 at minimum, but we haven't formally looked into that. We only know what's registered and that's about 12.
Okay. So, so if we capped it at 1.5% of the town's population, that means there could be 1,500 Airbnbs.
No, no, not the population, the amount of housing stock.
Okay.
So eligible units.
Okay.
And then a percentage of that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor DeRozan.
I just want to add my thank you. Uh, Vice President Belcher, this has been a long time in the making and, um, not only have you led an effort that's really taken in, uh, everyone's questions and concerns and ideas about what should be in this ordinance. Um, but the way that you laid out this document that you just walked through that literally goes category by category and tells us what's in the existing ordinance and what's going to be in the, in the draft ordinance is extremely helpful. I think we've all been a part of efforts where we're asked to just go back and reference existing documentation. I almost want to call out, you know, ChatGPT to help you out with it. Uh, you've done all the hard work for us and done a great job of summarizing this and, and, uh, also appreciate everybody that's also been helping you with this effort. Um, that's my full support. Thank you.
You have a discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Ayo.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Tassanari.
Yes.
Counsel Spoh.
Yes.
Counsel DeRozan.
Yes.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President Luttey.
Yes.
Motion is passed. Thank you. New business, National Grid, which was the, uh, public hearing we had earlier for the poll 31116656, the North Sidewalk on Main Street. We refer that to public health and safety. Um, proposed design review board, um, talking with the town manager is something that we both wanted to do for, I know he's one of the deuce since he's been here and I've wanted to do longer, but, um, trying to create an advisory board, um, which would, when a project comes forward, they would get the plan immediately. Hopefully we would have a bunch of architects on it. They would get to look at the plan. They would get to look at the aesthetics of the plan. They would get to look at the neighborhoods of the town of Winter, the character and such. Uh, and they would make recommendations to the planning board. The planning board is not obligated to take their recommendations. Um, but I think it's something that we've long, a lot of residents have long asked for. Um, so I hope to be, uh, taking applicants for that. We will go through a screening process on the council and then we will name a board. Uh, town manager, do you want to speak on this?
No, it's like you said, it's something we've talked about in the past, uh, you and I and several counselors about it. But, um, it's the first time I've worked in where I haven't had a design review board. Um, you know, it's been really helpful in the last two towns I worked in there. You know, bring a lot of thoughtfulness and a lot of, you know, considering the history of the town and the, you know, the architecture of buildings. It's been very, you know, um, proactive and, uh, very positive for the town. So, um, it's worked out really well and the planning boards I've found in the past have usually taken their advice and, uh, pushed back on the architects and the developers and, you know, made the changes to the building. So it fits more with the, you know, the neighborhoods, the community and really what the vision of the town is. So like you said, it tends to be architects, engineers, people like that on that committee. And that's really what you want to strive for. So I'd love to see it set up.
Uh, Counsel Spoh, and then.
I, I'm delighted about this. In fact, I've been to several planning meetings. I've been to the appeals board. They are begging us to say, to, for town council to do this. And in addition to that, these, the parking regs can go in there too, in terms of the, you know, what, what we want it to look like. As I said to the planning board, when we're all finished with CBD, what, are you going to be proud of it? What's it going to look like? And I, I think that is really helpful. I, I think that's a great suggestion, both of you. And, and I look forward to, um, hearing what they have to say.
Counsel Tassanari.
Just as a question of, I guess, process here. How, how quickly can we stand up this, this advisory board? And what would be their first set of, set of projects? I know there was a presentation on the old Kirby site recently. Would that be able to go back to this advisory board for their import? Or is that, are we pass that?
I mean, we're gonna, I'm asking right now, I'm gonna ask tonight that we get letters of interest for if anybody, you know, predominantly architects, engineers, people with a expertise in this area. Uh, it will, hopefully we'll get multiple applicants in. We'll go through the process of screening through the committee. So, you know, let's say by late August, you have a board together. Um, I'm, I'm sure whatever they could do in terms of help if they're in that stage. I, it's not something that they were named after the facts or they're not eligible. I mean, I think if we could use them, we would love to use them.
Great.
I can speak to that a little bit. Um, that probably, that, they've only had a pre-meeting with the planning board so far. They haven't actually filed yet. So we have a little bit of time, but I will say members of the historical committee has already reached out and they've got a setup with the plans, um, you know, so they've taken a look at it because that is in the historic district and they had some concerns about the building. So some of that stuff's already happening on that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel DeRozan and then Counsel Costigan.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just a quick question. Tony, talk a little bit about, um, what the process would be for projects to come before that. Uh, how would they get generated and how?
The Counsel President said it, uh, when the plans get filed with the planning board, a set of, a set of plans automatically was off the design review board. So they're already taking a look at it. So as the first presentation's coming forward, they've already sort of maybe had the notes and will be able to offer, you know, updates and, you know, potential changes and things they'd like to see differently to the planning board early in the process.
Okay. Okay. So it starts with what's brought to the planning board?
Correct.
Got it? Yep. Thank you.
Counsel Costigan.
Thank you, uh, Town Council President. I'm ecstatic about this as well. It gives some oversight as it relates to the development in town, needless to say. Uh, I've been saying this for quite a while. And, um, again, I'd like to see a full spreadsheet with a, uh, scheduled, uh, timeline on what has been proposed, what has been approved, what has been debated on. I know I could, I could attend every committee meeting in this town, but I'd be going every day of the week to get that information. So I would like to see some of these departments, or should we say committees, uh, maybe forward some of this information as it relates to, uh, their meetings and then a spreadsheet. So the town council can see where we are with these projects as they are, uh, coming to light. I think there, again, transparency, there's a lot of information and there's a lot of building going on. The calls I get, what's going up here, what's going up there? And I'm sorry, I don't have that information. So I would just like to see more information given to the council as it relates to the development of properties, units, et cetera, in this town so we then can answer to our constituents. Thank you, Town Council President.
Counsel Ayo.
Uh, yeah, I think this is a great idea. Uh, just a couple of, uh, questions. Um, I got a little bit of familiarity, but not a lot. But in the places where I've seen this stuff work, um, they actually do have some guidelines, um, that, uh, around urban design and architecture. They may vary from section to section depending upon the size of the community. Um, but that's sort of codified, at least it, it protects, um, the town from developers saying, hey, you're being random, you did this here, but you didn't do that there. So one of the things I'd like to hear about is whether or not this first group that gets appointed is going to have the responsibility for generating some draft urban design guidelines and architectural guidelines. So how that, how that's going to work? Because it's, to standard up is going to be a little bit probably more work than it's ongoing work on review and projects, I guess, but.
Well, that'll be a directive that'll come from the council if we want the planning board and others to look at, do we want to do a master plan? Do we want to do a community development guidelines? Whatever we want to do, because that, all what you're talking about can be interrelated to that and then they can use that as we move forward. So that's some of it.
And can you along the, on the road, um, just give us how other communities approached that set of issues? So we could look at and study and?
Yeah, absolutely.
And be informed.
Yep. I've been through several of those processes.
I, I feel I need to learn more about this. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, appointments, reappointments. Um, I have a motion, the town council accept the reappointments made by Town Council President Luttey to the following committees for a term of three years or take any other action relative to it. Two, Conservation Committee, Charles Cubic and Alex Reynolds. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Tassanari. Any discussion on the motion? Thank them both for stepping up and reapplying. Uh, motion passed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No? No. Fire hydrant poles. So I've had a few calls from a couple of residents, um, young children that did this and me being the 65-year-old guy did it also. So, uh, a lot of the poles they have on the fire, on the fire hydrants, right? There's fiberglass poles that stick up for, um, a couple of young kids that were walking, put their hands up and down the pole or whatever, and they got all fiberglass cuts on them. That's right. Um, me being an idiot, go out and say, no, that doesn't happen. I do it. Of course it happens. Um, I, I've talked to the chief to ask what we can do, right? And they have roughly 10, these poles are roughly 10 years old and the fiberglass just gets brittle and, and it does cause a rather miserable cut. And the parents were as concerned as they were for their hands, they were concerned that the kids were gonna wipe their tears away or whatever and put the fiberglass in their eyes. So, you know, everything's been good with that. But, uh, we have roughly 10 poles, like extra poles. So asked how many fire poles we have, uh, how many fire hydrants we have. We have roughly 450 fire hydrants. The poles cost roughly $35 to $40 apiece. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a investment. Uh, but I've been looking at with the town manager, we've isolated some funds that we're going to try to do half in fiscal '26 and then half following year fiscal '27. So, um, you know, it's just a, a small issue, but you don't realize the impact it could have and, uh, let alone for little kids, but for stupid older people as well. Uh, Counsel Spoh.
Can you tape? Can you tape the?
It's very little. I talked to the fire chief. I, I mean, I guess you can go out and put electrical tape, but again, if you're going to put black tape, it's kind of defeats the purpose of the, the visualness of.
Well, it could be white.
Yeah, it could be.
But my point is, just to keep the kids safe while we.
No, I know. And there are, if there, if, if anybody notices poles that they, that they see urgently, we do have roughly 10 or so poles, extra new poles, uh, that we can't switch out. But, uh, the thought would be that we could, you know, get them in a timely minute a half. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Is fiberglass the standard material for these? So that's okay.
Not crazy, right? Um, there's a, Counsel Ayo, you have a motion?
Yes, so two motions. Um, thank you. Um, so the first, I'm going to take him in opposite order of the, of the agenda order, if that's okay?
Yep.
Um, so we've been looking at the abandonment clause for town councilors and, uh, we have been advised by our general counsel that, um, the way we put the, um, the, the ordinance together was utterly vague in his, his words and therefore, uh, really random in terms of its enforceability. So my first, um, uh, motion that I'm filing is to ask the town manager to work with the town's lawyer to look at, um, what our regulation should be. We also should be aware of the fact that the state, uh, makes remote participation, um, available to us. So normally the law says you have to be in person. When COVID came, it said you didn't have to be in person. But the state also said that there are some tests of things you've got to do to make sure that someone who chooses to be, uh, remote and needs to be remote for any particular reason, uh, is accommodated and recognized. And so it's a two-way street that the council has obligations to the person's remote and the person's remote has obligations back to the council. Uh, so the first one would be to gather all of the, uh, materials that, uh, we have put together as a town to look at other comments from the ordinance review committee and from town councilors and to look at the state law as it applies to municipalities and put together a memo that says, here's everything that needs to be accommodated in terms of having a good, clear abandonment clause that is also enforceable and, um, bring a set of recommendations back to the town council. So that's the first one, uh, if I agree.
Want to take them individual?
Say again?
Do you want to just stick on that one?
Yeah, let's just stick on that and.
So, um, there's a motion, first time coming before the council. Um, there was second for discussion, second by Counsel DeRozan. Um, and, and I think as Counsel Ayo stated, this is, um, the ordinance reviewer has taken much of this under their purview right now and will be coming back. And I'm sure that will be helpful information. Um, I don't see any harm at all in, in, in asking the town manager and, and town council to, to look into outside laws and rules and regulations in states and stuff. Um, I think this is relatively straightforward. We want to eventually get this right and look into this. Um, you know, we understand that it, it is a very vague, um, the way it's written in the charter. Um, and, and we also understand that any individual council or whatever obviously has due process to, to make a case for themselves as well. So, um, I don't see any problem with this motion. It's the first time coming before us, but I don't see any problem with it if there's any further discussion. Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Uh, Counsel Ayo.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, second ordinance is, uh, concerning ensuring that, um, Zoom is available at, um, meetings to the maximum extent possible. Uh, so, uh, for those of you who have sort of participated in dealing with the council, know that from time to time, we, uh, worry about the size of the crowd given the topics that we are going to be talking about. And we choose to go to another location. One of those locations frequently is at the DeLeo Center. The DeLeo Center is not Zoom, uh, ready yet. So while you can watch, uh, council meeting from your home on Winter Cable TV, you cannot interact with the, uh, council when it comes to public comment period, et cetera. In addition to that, it, if one of us or two of us from the council, uh, for some reason can't make it physically, it doesn't allow us to be present. So while we're clarifying with the intent to enforce the abandonment clause and have a new abandonment clause, we want to make sure that, um, over the long term, when we're choosing to go to a site that is not Zoom compatible, that, um, that the council basically in its majority agrees. So what I'm proposing in this ordinance is that five councilors would need to agree, say the president would have proposed and four would agree to create five to move to a location from time to time that is not Zoom compatible. Uh, so that you all know, we're not doing it for frivolous reasons, that we're doing it because it's absolutely necessary and we realize it's a hardship for people who can't often get to, um, to these meetings.
All right. So, um, there's a motion by Counsel Ayo. Is there a second for discussion?
Could you say the motion again? Just, just.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, just read it. Would you mind?
Sure. Sorry.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, do you mind? I'm trying.
Uh, Counsel Ayo, I move to amend the Winter Town Council rules and procedures to include a rule that indicates that all special and regularly scheduled meetings of the town council shall be held in the Harvey Hearing Room or another venue fully equipped with video conferencing technology that would enable a member of the town council to participate remotely in accordance with chapter two of the Acts of 2025. And any subsequent updates to section 20 of chapter of the Acts of 2021, unless there was a majority vote of the council to select a different venue. That motion's been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel DeRozan. Uh, with this, again, I'll, I'll just say this is first time coming before the council. I think, again, there's not much you can argue with, with the motion. I, I, I would like to refer it to finance because I think, um, to do this, we would need to.
I already have a price for it. It's $30,000 if you want to put Zoom in at the seams, honey. We, we got it before, so, um, I performed the council, that just didn't get any action. But we'd have to move money around to find out if finance it.
And look at.
Yeah, absolutely, it should go to finance. I'm just saying, we already have that price and we're.
Is that the?
It was about 22 to do this room back during COVID, so the 30 number is not that big. It's the, the, where the big price is the monitor, the, you know, 80 or 90-inch monitor they need to put on the, behind, we're basically with the council president sits on the wall and all the equipment and the microphones that we have and everything else, so. And they're off the state bid list, so we didn't need to, you know, same company that did this, so we didn't need to put it out to bid. But yeah, so that's the, kind of the going rate. Might be able to shave a little bit off of it, but I mean, it's going to be in that range between 25 and 30,000 to put Zoom. but I mean, it's gonna be in that range between $25,000 and $30,000 to put Zoom in over there.
And I know Councilor Ayala put in, one of the questions was, if there is a majority vote or whatever, we can stay in a different location. And there potentially, sometimes, you know, we have a meeting scheduled, and all of a sudden, we might not have thought it was a major issue, and becomes a major issue. So then, you know, I think it's a -- I think the intent is great. I'm all in favor of it. But I would like to send it to either Rules and Finance for a joint meeting, just to take a look. Again, we gotta find money. And again, even if we didn't have the money in play, even if we didn't have it right now, if we had a plan, at least we could work towards that. So I'm gonna send this to Rules and Finance. I will take a quick comment, because I know. So I'm not gonna send it yet, but I am going to.
Defer to Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent plan. The council rules are with rules and ordinance right now. You'll have them by the next meeting. But I think this is a good idea to pass, even if we do equip the senior center, because there's other venues in town, right? There's the high school, whatever, whatever. I think it's good to just make a conscious effort to say, we know this is somewhere that doesn't accommodate Zoom. And obviously, there are exceptions, but.
Well, and it could be an amendment to stop in January or February, whatever happens to be. Councilor DiMarco?
I can't speak for the financial aspect of it, but Council President, you and I, I think at the time, were the only two people on this council that were on the council at the time. I actually made a motion to have every meeting on Zoom, and it passed unanimously. So needless to say, I was really upset the first time we had a meeting in the senior center, and I found out that it didn't have Zoom capability because it went against the motion that I had passed. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I already made a very similar motion, and it passed unanimously.
Councilor Spoh?
No, I just, are there any other technologies aside from Zoom? Since we've had Zoom bomb before, is there -- could we try Google Meets or any other options that?
I think with Zoom, with webinar, we have.
Or webinar?
He's had to make sure we run our meetings as webinars.
Yeah, they're all webinars.
Yeah, they're all.
We're doing that. Okay, that's, thank you.
Vice President Belcher?
I think that was a really good point by Councilor Spoh. We should make sure that all of our stuff, and I think it does say video conferencing or whatever, we don't wanna.
Right, we don't wanna talk Zoom.
Just if everybody could keep an eye on.
Councilor Tassanari?
This is a general, thank you, Council President. Just as a general question to the town manager, what are the other things that we hold at the senior center that could benefit from these Zoom capabilities? So that it's not just, so if we're gonna justify a $30,000 expense, what else, what other utility can we get out of that? Those webinars, those Zoom capabilities in the senior center?
We're always looking for meeting space, right? I mean, constantly battle with the niece and trying to get this room and all the rooms that are Zoom-capable. So it'd be another avenue, just you could have plenty of board meetings that you could have. Conscom meetings, I mean, Conscom does a lot of stuff on Zoom, ZBA. I mean, you know, just another meeting space. And, you know, resident groups that wanna get together and meet, there's all sorts of options for that.
That's great. Thank you.
So I'm going to refer this to a joint meeting between Rules and Finance. Those are those two. So I did have one more, again, after talking with the town manager and looking at some schedules. Next scheduled meetings, our next four, July 15th, August 5th, August 19th, and then September 2nd. I'd like to make a motion, and I'll explain why. Looking at the schedules for August, it looks like we can consolidate meetings and meet every three weeks and make an amendment to the council rules that the following meetings would be July 22nd, August 12th, September 2nd. So it'd be every three weeks if we need a special meeting. I'm always up for a special meeting, but it gives a little more flexibility for the summer schedule. I'll make that motion since the second.
The third date on those three?
Just for discussion. So the council meeting dates right now would be September, July 15th, August 5th, August 19th, September 2nd. I would make a motion to amend them till September 20 -- I'm sorry. Say that again. July 22nd, August 12th, September 2nd. So it puts three weeks in between meetings. It gives us flexibility if we need an extra meeting. A little half flexibility in terms of time for the summer. And the other reason is, our initial conversations with IKG says, they can't meet on the 22nd, but potentially can meet on the 15th. But can potentially meet on the 22nd.
That's good.
Because I think that's gonna be important. So any other discuss -- there's a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm sure everybody's not just waiting because they're interested in the council meeting right now, but we will go to public comment. Yes?
Diane Sims, Precinct 5. Brought up the abandonment issue, which we've discussed lately recently. I have a question. In reviewing the charter with the abandonment issue, there's no other reason to remove a counselor for violation, bad behavior. I looked at this before, and Mr. Tassanari mentioned Robert's rules, and I had mentioned Robert's rules about removing a counselor before with bad behavior. Why is there nothing but abandonment in the charter? That's a question.
I know, it's public comment, but I can't answer you right now.
I know.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ali Santiago, Precinct 5. I'm speaking today to encourage any action that can be taken to petition for federal oversight of ICE practices in our community. There was an incident in late April. Two of our neighbors were taken by ICE right across the street from where I live. I was coming home from a yoga class in the morning, in my morning routine, pulling up to where I live, and I saw multiple unmarked cars and numerous masked men congregated around a van. And after some time, they took two men away in handcuffs. What's important to know about the masked men? So one, those men would not identify themselves when asked on video. Two, those men had no warrant, no signed warrant, no unsigned warrant. In fact, that's the only thing they would confirm on video when they were asked. If they had a warrant, they said no. Three, those men were looking for someone totally different than the two men they took. The two men they took were not on their radar at all, and yet they were taken away in handcuffs and detained for six weeks. What's important to know about the men who were taken? One, these men are a part of our community. They were working for a local Winthrop business run by someone who's been a Winthrop resident for decades. These men have families, a newborn baby, multiple children enrolled in Winthrop's school system. Two, the men who were taken had no criminal record, and that's not hearsay. I sat in one of their master hearings and heard the judge confirm that there was no criminal record. And three, the men who were taken were already going through the correct channels to seek legal status. In fact, they never missed a single hearing and had court dates already set up for later in the year. So there are lots of reasons why this is important to me, just humanity level. But whether you see things the way I do in a general sense, hear me out about why oversight is important. When we have masked men with no signed warrant, no unsigned warrant, not even the name of the person they're taking, who by the way, has no criminal history, not even an accused criminal history, we are actually all in trouble. Like, this is our community. And if our fourth and fifth amendment rights are eroded, there is not one of us who escapes that danger. So requesting federal oversight is actually a concrete step that we can take to protect those of us and our neighbors who are currently being targeted, but also to protect those of us and our neighbors who are not being targeted but will feel the impact of the loss of our rights all the same. So please consider any possible actions, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Ruthie Sullivan, Precinct 1. Sorry, I didn't send it too long. Getting back on the Zoom thing, is the high school an option? The auditorium of the high school? And second of all, can everyone, maybe because I'm so far away and I'm also old with gray hair, can you move your microphones a little closer when they're talking?
I will say that these microphones, yeah, these microphones don't do anything.
Oh, so they're just for show?
Well, they used to be the way we would communicate through WCAT. Now they're up top. So these are backup as of now, in case we have an emergency.
My microphone. What was that again?
Mr. Tassanari?
Mark Sander, Precinct 2. This is directed at your vice president. Is there a mechanism in place to identify illegal Airbnbs right now?
And again, it's just public comment, period, macro, really.
But I mean, you just put it up there. I mean, is there a mechanism in place? That's all I wanted to know. And Councilor DeRoz, in light of the recent firing in your area, I'm wondering if you're changing your position on 3A, as if it's initiated, it will increase the density of this town. The climate day that that took place will only increase the rush hour traffic in town, and it will hamper mutual aid. Okay? It'll take long for Boston, Chelsea, Everett, Revere, whoever responds with passport. I really think you should reconsider it. If there was even a 15 mile an hour wind that day, we would've lost more homes. And I'm just wondering if it's gonna take a death for us to actually realize the density of this town is getting to that bursting point. So I really wish you would reconsider your viewpoint on 3A.
Thank you. Jeannie?
My name is Gemma, Precinct 6. But I'm standing up to talk about the Medical Reserve Corps. Councilor DeRoz mentioned SPAC, volunteer group that comes out. Winthrop's Medical Reserve Corps has been in existence for over 20 years. We have been there for fires. We have been there for sheltering. We have been there for vaccine clinics. We are all volunteers, some of us everyday citizens, some of us medical people. But I just wanna remind the council and the town that we are here for you as well, as volunteers as a group. And especially, the town manager knows that when we had the fire on Veterans Road, the Medical Reserve Corps was there at the senior center, helping to take care of the people. And we are there. We are there for this community. We are there for you, for whatever you need as well.
Thank you.
Mike Kielin, Precinct 2. Just wanna discuss briefly the need, and especially after the vote two weeks ago on the planning board's plan, the future of our grant funding, which was specifically earmarked for flood mitigation work on Morton Street. To be more specific, it was earmarked to push that project to the design phase for the Woods Hole organization. And with the, ultimately, what would be us getting turned down for that grant in a matter of weeks, that project is stuck in limbo with nowhere to go. It was October 1st of last year that about a dozen people from the Morton and Banks flood plane came in, and they had a lot of concerns and a lot of questions. And they were, and granted, it was public comment, but they were met with mostly uncomfortable signs. Because while work is being pushed forward on Towson and Girls Street, it's fantastic, it's great, it's wonderful. It's gonna save a lot of people, a lot of trouble. Morton Banks don't have any answers about what the next step is. And I talked to about a dozen people in the run-up to that vote two weeks ago. And some of the people who were here that day have moved. They've abandoned ship. And many of the others that I talked to, it's a common theme, they said they're very seriously considering leaving. They don't know what to do, and they don't have any answers. If the answer is that this is going to be sort of balled up with the other $13 million in drainage work that needs to be done into a debt exclusion, that needs to be talked about openly with these residents, needs to be talked about now. We need to be proactive. We need to get in front of it, because we're gonna be asking the rest of the town at a time when the bulk of these recent tax raises, between $1,500 and $2,000 a year, you're gonna ask people to go to the polls and vote for debt exclusion, to protect homes on streets that they don't live on, and maybe don't even drive down. It's a tall order. Something needs to be done, and please, for the love of God, communicate with these people. They don't know what's going on. And I was, you know, somebody tried to sort of poke fun at the fact that I had said that before. I don't mean that to degrade anybody in the neighborhood. I just mean, nobody's talking about what the reality of this situation is. If it's gonna be 2033, tell them it's gonna be 2033, because maybe the best thing for them to do is. It's sad, but we need to be honest. We need to do an assessment here and now and say, that's the best we can do for you. That's all I got. Also, I personally did the thing with the fire pole, talking to my neighbor, Dave Pappy, and it was very embarrassing. And yeah, I would caution anybody.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Dogg, Precinct 1. All the questions put off by Mr. Tillman about the Woods Hole study of Morton Street. I've asked for three months to get a copy of the Woods Hole study. It's not in this building. Usually when Woods Hole does a study, you'll get a three-ring binder full of all the information. I've only asked for the Morton Street portion of the Woods Hole study. I asked for it last week, deployed it. So let's see what happens here. I remember it, and I don't know if we paid for it. I think they did a study of the whole town. As far as flooding is concerned, but I'm not positive on that. So if anybody wants to know, any answers, read the Woods Hole study. It's supposed to be here in this building, but it's not. So I had to deploy it. As far as the tree that was taken from the town on Bowden Street, do we have a report on that situation? It has to be answered. Good or bad or indifferent, there should be a report so everybody knows in the town when or not to take down trees in that particular circumstance. I had a few more items, but it's gonna log that. Thank you.
Shannon? Did you have anything? I'm sorry. Did you have anything? No, I'm sorry. Yes, Tom?
Tom DeDarian, Precinct 3, and your well-dressed tree warden.
Very nice, very nice.
During the wicked hot days, I put on social media the request for citizens to fill up the green watering bags for trees. And lots of them did that. And that was wonderful, and thanks, and it's gonna get hot again. So let's keep up the good work. It's appreciated. The trees appreciate it. They asked me to thank everyone.
Colleen Murphy, Precinct 2. I know this is the tree warden, but I have a question. What is the town doing about trees that are lifting the sidewalks? I'm surprised that the disability folks have it for our issues. I live on Towson Road. There's three on my street. There's two on Marshall Street. You can't even push a baby carriage. I mean, I know we can't cut down trees. I get it, I get it, I get it. I get it. But this is a safety issue. It's a lawsuit in working. So I'm just wondering what the town, is there a plan to take care of the trees that are ripping up the sidewalks so that you can't push a baby carriage or push a wheelchair on some of the streets, sidewalks?
Thank you.
No, right. There's no ramps?
Yes.
Lee Foley, Precinct 6. I just want to repeat that my gentleman here mentioned 3A when he was talking about the fire off the beach. But that construction had nothing to do with 3A, where there's going to be no new building for 3A. With the 3A overlays, it's just rezoning, only rezoning. So to link 3A with. So I just wanna remind people that maybe don't know and are listening to this and thinking that's true, that is not true. There will be no new construction in Winthrop because of 3A. There's plenty of construction going on. Do we have to be gabbling people, or they can just talk when?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. There's gonna be construction. The construction that's going on is outside of 3A. It's not happening because of 3A. It's happening for other reasons, but it's not 3A.
Yes?
Shannon Ari, no idea what precinct I live in. I'm off calling, I don't know. But I'm just like listening to pieces. I've come to some town council meetings before, but I'm more frequent at the school committee meetings, considering the issue that I covered. I think the town can come together if it needs to. And I don't know if this is just me, but I'm like hearing some push and pull and some tension. And I can't vote, so I really can't say anything. One more year to go. But the town can come together, and I've seen it happen. I've seen the failed override in November, and I've seen the past one in April. And just the trajectory of that last six months and how fast the town can come together when they really need it is absolutely incredible. Winthrop is a small community, but we're very, I think, and so we rely off of each other, and we need each other to do as each other. We need to make like a community that wants to be local, with our good beaches, with our good housing spaces, just everything that the council members and the public have mentioned. and the public have mentioned, so Wintor can come together. And people are losing hope, but that's what I'm gathering, but don't vote. I'm not from here, like what you said, I spoke, I'm not from here. I moved here my freshman year of high school. So I've not been here nearly as long as any of you guys have. But in my four years, Wintor can come together, so.
Thank you. Diane.
Diane Seals, Precinct 5. A couple of questions. No questions, sorry. CPD, I, long ago, we discussed some kind of committee that would make a naval unified look in the CPD. It was several years ago, but is there anyone, and you can audience this, but is there anyone that's monitoring? I look at Riviera Beach, that's my, what I'm using as an example. Are we not going to end up with four levels, five levels of all different colors and shapes? Are we, are we going to make it like a community look? That it would blend all the buildings when they build? That's one. The other thing I have to say is, I agree with Lee that the building that's being done today is not by 3, under 3A. We voted 3A down, I believe, so it can't be under 3A. But 3A is a housing building, a new housing quarter. So if anyone thinks that we're not going to have any new houses, any new buildings, they have another thing coming. It's to solve a crisis. It's not to have a piece of paper, and it's not to have no buildings. We will end up with more buildings, that's my statement.
Thank you. John.
Hi, John Martin, Precinct 4, and a member of the Wintor Commission on Disability. In January of '23, I filed a complaint on the 190 Somerset Avenue tree and sidewalk. It took a year before that hearing was heard. My complaint was found valid. The town had the opportunity to appeal. The town waited until almost the last minute to file in Suffolk Superior Civil Court. That was, I believe, a year ago this month. That has not been heard. If somebody has a problem with a sidewalk and a tree, please let me know. When I hear about the complaint I made two years ago, we will look into it as a commission on disability. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Vassili.
Vassili.
Thanks, thanks, any Vassili, now he's Precinct 1. Thank you to the tree warden, Mr. DeDarian, for giving us the okay to water those trees. I would just give one suggestion. If a video, you can get on WCAT with a video on how to water those properly, there is a side shoot, that you're supposed to put the water in, don't put it through the middle. But I do appreciate that. And the biggest thing is it's Wintor's greatest weekend. Everybody have a good July 4th. Enjoy it, celebrate with family and friends. Have a good night.
Thank you. Public relation nomination papers again for local elections. Local election is November 4th, 2025, available at the clerk's office. And again, wish everybody a very happy Fourth in the council. Enjoy yourself. Fireworks.
The heart most.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say. Enjoy the Fourth, enjoy the fireworks, be safe. Fireworks, former chief Flanagan has done an incredible job once again. They will be on the Fourth that evening. Harvest parade will be in the morning, nine.
Nine.
Nine o'clock, I think this is 147 here. So I, again, I encourage everybody to be safe, enjoy the nice, it looks like warm weather, and enjoy the Fourth. It's one of one of those best traditions, and we hold it near and dear to our hearts. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.